Good evening. I'm a call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on August 23rd, 2018. Can everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a published agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any changes? Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda items. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. We have an agenda. First up on our agenda is public comments not on the agenda, and we do have one person who's signed up so far. Can you state your full name and tell your where you're from and keep your comments about three minutes?
Yes, my name is Leah Phipps. I'm from Inlay Street. That's in the Horizon Point area, and I'm actually here to discuss the Horizon Point area and some safety concerns that we have there. About a year and a half ago, I contacted Public Works, Planning and Zoning, and the Police Department after I had witnessed the sixth accident at 71st Avenue Southeast and Inlay Street. That's about four houses down from where I live. All three of those areas that I contacted passed the buck. Finally, Public Works told me that that area is not an area they were concerned with. I had called all three of those wishing to express my concern that my entire subdivision has no yield signs or stop signs at the intersections within my subdivision. We have an elementary school. We have lots of kids playing in the streets, although we do have parks. We do have kids that play in the streets, and recently we have also become a thoroughfare for people who like to drive by and ignore balustrade, yell "reinier" because of a lot of the construction that's going on in the area. And so what's happening is we're getting a lot of visitors to our areas who don't realize that we don't have yields and we don't have stops. And you think they're paying attention to 25 miles per hour? Nope, they are not. They're not even paying any attention to 35 or 55. Believe me, we've actually been out there clocking them because my area is full of military and law enforcement. So we're out there, and we're paying more attention than the city of Lacey is, and we're calling the city of Lacey, and we're still getting past the buck. So a week and a half ago, we had a 16-year-old visitor and a 48-year-old visitor, and they both collided on a Saturday afternoon where we had children playing in the street about 900 feet away. Now, I had the great luxury of being here a little bit earlier and listening to you guys talk about your children and your grandchildren and their driving abilities. These could have well been your children in my neighborhood. So I'm not going to call anymore and be past the buck. I'm here, and I'm telling you all that you're responsible for these subdivisions. You're responsible for my subdivision, and we don't have yield signs. We need some yield signs. There's no yield sign behind the new Dairy Queen. I have sent Facebook messages to three of you. I'm tired of being past-the-buck Chick. Get me some yield signs. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to address the council on any items not on the agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
May I comment?
Please.
Thanks. So thanks for speaking tonight and being here. I'm going to be reporting tonight from my Transportation Committee of another nearby neighborhood that had a concern about traffic in their area, and they brought it to a work session and were able to present that, and then the staff was able to delve in and report back. So if you wouldn't mind just writing a letter to City Hall, you can address it to Councilmember Hearn, and we can see if we can't address it through that way or through staff. That's fine, and if you haven't, you know, we'll get your response, I'm sure.
That'd be great. Thank you very much, sir. I appreciate it.
The neighborhood he's talking about, too, is Beckon Ridge, which is right down by you also, right behind the QFC.
Got it. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. So any other comments? Seeing none, we're on to resolutions. An emergency declaration in response to August 15th, 2018. Dave? Are you giving us?
Yes, I am. I think Roger and I will both probably have some comments for the council. What's before the council today is a resolution. As I think councils are aware, last week, the city, the mayor, signed an emergency declaration, and the basis for that was there was a water valve malfunction that caused water shut off in the Hogan Bay in the northeast area. It also caused some significant road damage. And so typically, in order to repair that, the city would have to go out to bid and whatnot. Because of the emergent nature, the city needed to get the repairs immediately. The declaration of emergency allowed the city to avoid the bid process. Because we did that, now state law requires the passage of a resolution by the council finding that such an emergency did in fact exist. So if there's questions about the facts of it, I defer to City Engineer Roger Sessell, but I certainly can answer any questions.
Can I get a motion?
Move to approve a resolution finding that the extensive road damage and water supply disruption caused by the water valve malfunction on August 15th, 2018 constituted an emergency?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? Before we get started here, I just really want to commend the city and the Public Works Department for stepping up. This happened on Wednesday. We had it fixed by the weekend. If I didn't sign this declaration of an emergency, that road probably might not be repaired till next year because you just think about having to put out 45-day notice and now get it on the schedule, and then now you're into the fall rainy season. I mean, it could have been next year before we. And we were able to cut all that red tape, and to tell you the truth, the cost on this comes in right where we probably went out for a bid. You know, it's amazing how, by a declaration of emergency, how we're able to cut out all the red tape and see how efficient we're just done. Broke on Wednesday, we had it fixed by that weekend. I mean, that's just absolutely amazing.
Yeah, the only thing I was going to say is, basically, you just said it. The staff did an incredible job, so thank you to the directors and their staff. It was just great work. That's what the people of Lacey expect from us, so really proud to be part of that.
I'll second that.
And it was under the $200,000?
I know. Yeah. Do we get a final cost on that? What do you think it's going to be, Roger?
Our contract with Lakeside Industries is about $156,000, but that does include staff time. So we're going to be well under that $200,000 mark. That was our best estimate based on the damage that we saw on the surface.
Yeah, great.
That's excellent.
So we have a motion and a second to approve this resolution for the road damage and water supply disruption on August 15th, 2008, which constitute an emergency. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the mayor's report, and I have two appointments and a reappointment today. We can take the two, however you want to do this, you want to do this all in one motion. Let's do it all in one motion. So I would move that we appoint Karina Paciencia to the Parks Board, that we appoint Romelo Chavez to the Stork Commission, and that we reappoint Irene Kang to the Library Board.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
If the pending appointees are present, it would be wonderful to have them here about what their plans are for their service.
I don't think anyone's here. No, no one's here. The Stork Commission? Romelo's here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Do you want to come up and introduce? Go ahead and come up here.
He's got to convince us.
Just tell us a little bit about yourself and why you want to be on the Stork Commission.
Okay, well, my name's Romelo Chavez, and I've always really been interested in history and also, like, government. And so I was really excited for this opportunity just because I can do both. I can learn about the history of Lacey, work on that museum that they're going to be making, and I can also kind of get a little bit of an introduction into just local government and be able to learn how everything works.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Is there any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Thank you very much. Now we're on to the city manager's report.
I'm the mayor of the City Council. I know I stepped out, but I do want to thank, and maybe Roger already did this, the Hogan Bay event and actually getting that road repaired was actually pretty impressive. When you think about the incident happening on Wednesday and then really Thursday, Friday, Saturday, the road was actually rebuilt. I know sometimes people talk about government not being able to react and do things quickly. I don't think you could have done that any more quickly. So Public Works, good job. Really, Public Affairs getting the word out. Utility billing helped out trying to notify the utility customers that were going to be affected in that area. But I think this is an example of Lacey local government actually being able to get good things done in a quick and efficient fashion, so I just wanted to make that point. So I do have a report before council. Council may recall that there was a discussion about having a City Hall flag policy. This would give the ability for the City Council to fly a flag in addition to the American flag, the Washington State flag, and also the city flag as well as the POW MIA flag. Council had a discussion at a work session that was then directed to a General Government Committee meeting. The General Government Committee had a lot of discussion about this, and the proposal that they wanted to bring before the full council was essentially that the City Council as a body has the right to decide if they want to fly a flag of their choosing, and that would be made by a majority of the City Council. They've also talked about two council-approved flags that they would be amenable to. One is the Sister City flag. As you know, we have a Sister City relationship with Mintz Maziewetski in Poland, and then also the Pride flag, which they talked about having flown each year from June 1st to June 30th. So there was some discussion at that General Government Committee. It was agreed that it'd be brought to the full council for further discussion, and so this is an opportunity for council to have more deliberation about that.
Yeah, motion, please?
So I move that we approve the policy to adopt related to flying flags at City Hall.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt this policy, to have the sea flag policy that meets the council's intent for flying flags at City Hall. Discussion?
So I have a question as well as some statements, some comments. The question is, in this policy, it says that to fly a different flag must be made independently by council. Can you explain that?
Don't me too?
You or council, either one?
Probably council.
I mean, I've heard the explanation at committee, but I want...
Right, I guess...
I'd like the public to hear the explanation.
So I guess I'll begin, and then maybe the council can back me up. Would that be good? So what this policy is trying to at least preserve is that council can make a, can arrive at a decision on their own, not from outside requests, to fly a flag separate from the ones that were identified. So in a sense, what this is communicating is that council, if a member of council said, "I think it would be appropriate to fly a flag for representing some historical moment" or whatever that may be, the council would then have a discussion with their colleagues. If a majority of the council agreed, that could then be inserted in the flag policy.
So for clarification, and my understanding of that is, we could not act on a request from somebody or from some organization, correct? So that leads to some issues for me. For starters, two years ago, we were asked to fly the Pride flag, and we did, at a request. Last year, we did not fly the flag because it wasn't requested. This year, we flew the flag again because it was requested. So I'm not quite sure how this policy fits what we actually do in practice. The idea that we would fly a flag, any flag, that we came to that decision independently without a request is pretty much ridiculous, in my opinion. It's always going to be at a request because there's no other reason we would consider it. That's just how that happens. But to get to the real issue with this, we as elected officials are elected to represent all of the people of Lacey equally. The flags that represent all of the people, the American flag, the state flag, the city flag, and for that matter, the county flag, which isn't included on our list, and the POW MIA flag, they represent all people. There's no special interest there. Any flag other than those, by its nature, is representing a special interest group, and I think that's inappropriate for the city to fly any flag that represents any particular group. So I have serious concerns with this policy.
I have some comments that I wrote previous. With all respect, this is absolutely not a flag policy. This is a directive made by two members of council as a direct response to a special interest group's request. Public records confirm this for certain. Instead, I have written what I feel is a good flag policy that I will now read. A flag symbolizes unity flown high and proudly over all citizens that it represents, equally. Our American, state, Lacey City, and POW MIA flags unify all under them by nature, geography, and cause. Our POW MIA soldiers gave all for all of us, equally. Therefore, the city of Lacey shall only ever fly flags that represent all citizens by nature, geography, or cause, and out of honor, respect, indifference to all citizens, equally, under them. No special interest or partisan flag shall ever be flown over Lacey. This good flag policy will remain Lacey's legacy, will maintain Lacey's legacy of tolerance and respect for all Lacey citizens by not relegating our honored flag poles to special interest groups or polarizing causes. May we, the Lacey City Council, be instruments of peace and honor in our city and not polarizing division by way of catering to any special interests, especially when it comes to the honored flag poles. I move that we ask city staff to pen a good ordinance according to this aforementioned good policy. Do I have a second?
I would second that.
We still have a motion on the floor.
I have a comment.
Comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
So though I agree with the United States flag, of course, the Lacey flag, POW flag, brings up several different, you know, concerns of mine because I'm not a POW and I'm definitely not a MIA, missing in action. You know, I would love to see the Marine Corps flag be raised on the City Hall one day, say like February 23rd, to mark the anniversary of Mount Suribachi. That wouldn't be a possibility if we had a different flag policy. Now, that wouldn't include all Americans, or all citizens, or all people in Lacey, let alone the county, or the state, or the nation. But I think it should definitely be a possibility. It's better to be more general and a widespread policy than to have something locked in to where you couldn't do something, say like on the anniversary of 9/11, you know, or other historic days that you could recognize a small group or a certain people, if you will. So that's my...
I'm pretty sure that the policy that's before us would allow a majority of this council, if they want to put forward that flag, if there's a majority of council agreed, this policy would allow that to happen.
This policy would? I don't believe the other policy that was, that motion was made in second would.
It would only if the city owned that flag, which I have no idea why that's part of this, but that is part of this.
The fact that it becomes a city-approved flag, and so the city owns that flag. We're not accepting that flag from someplace else.
We actually have to purchase the flag, is what it says.
We have both of these flags.
Those two, I'm saying, but are there any other flag that were to be flown? The city would have to purchase that flag, and it would have to be owned by the city to be flown, under this policy.
So there is... Am I going to reverse order here? There's been a motion and a second, after a motion and a second.
I think we could do that. Councilmember Greenstein's motion was seconded.
It was Jason's motion.
Jason's motion.
Councilmember Hearn's motion was seconded by Councilmember Greenstein.
Yeah.
That could be addressed, and then...
We'll go on to the original motion. Okay. So it's been moved and seconded from Jason Hearn's reading of his state flag policy. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion fails. Now we're on to the original motion. Deputy Mayor?
So one of the reasons why this came up in the first place is to make sure that we are following, one, a policy and a legality of how we handle that. And I went back and mentioned in committee what happened when the Christmas tree at the rotunda was put up. They didn't have a policy, and then everybody came and wanted to put up multiple other things. So I think it's important to have something that we can follow with a policy. I think that's extremely important. The other thing is, I think it allows us to have control of what we do fly and what we don't. Why, yes, maybe the other things were requested, but now we don't have to follow what we did in the past. We have this policy in front of us, and we can say, "This is how it will be." So if some others want us to fly, I don't know what else, but something, we would have to put that aside. However, that doesn't mean that Councilmember Stedman couldn't say, "Well, you know, I really like that idea, and I'm going to propose da-da-da," and then we could make a decision. So that's how I see this policy moving forward. It's having the council have control.
Any other discussion? Yeah, I just sort of want to bring up how we got here. You know, we didn't have a flag policy before, and so when this council wanted to fly the Pride flag in June, there was resistance from several members of this council saying, "I can't support that. We don't have a flag policy." So now we have a proposed flag policy, and the resistance is, "Well, I don't like that flag policy." So, I mean, I think it's best for this council to adopt a flag policy, so we have a policy in place, so we have direction going forward. And so that's how we got here. This is a proposed policy that lays out the approved flags, and we have a motion and a second.
So one last thing. Just to be clear, I mean, council can pretty much do anything, so in the future, they could revisit this, and any flags approved, they could vote for them to be unapproved, correct?
That's true. A majority of council will always have the ability to make policy in City of Lacey.
So if we want to remove the MIA flag, we can, whatever.
For me, it's not an issue of which flags. It's an issue of any special interest flag. And, you know, two years ago, when we addressed this, we asked for a policy at that time, as all you may remember. And at that time, councilmembers who are no longer on the council actually didn't want to vote on that when it was in front of us because we didn't have a policy.
That's what I know.
Well, that person's no longer on this council. I at that time did vote in favor of flying the flag because I thought it was the appropriate thing to do at that time. However, I also thought we should have a flag policy. And I'm glad that we do have a flag policy in front of us. I just don't think it's a good flag policy. I mean, just because we have a policy doesn't mean we have to like the policy that's being presented.
Fair enough. Fair enough. Councilmember?
I'm going to submit my written remarks for the public record.
No problem. It's been moved and seconded to establish the City Hall flag policy. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
The motion carries.
One question I probably should have asked. Well, this refers to the flags here at City Hall. Does that include the Flag Plaza?
No, it's just this. The intention was this flag...
Just here in City Hall?
Yeah, City Hall flags.
It doesn't handle the other flag poles that we have at the Flag Plaza?
No.
Why?
Talking about the mall?
I'm not sure there are, are they?
So the time, you're right. We do have the Flag Plaza out by Applebee's. There's a similar situation, but this was specifically written for the City Hall.
I think it's always been an intent of this council to establish a City Hall flag policy, not looking at...
I always thought it was all of the flag poles, because as I recall, in fact, isn't that where we flew the Pride flag two years ago? Was that...
So we did, because that was the only location that we had three poles. And so since this is a brand-new arrangement, we now have three poles at the City Hall.
Okay.
That's right.
There's still no policy for the other flag poles, then. Why did we not include that in one policy? I'm just... It seems like, I mean, I don't understand why we wouldn't have a policy for those flag poles. There are flag poles as well. Am I missing something?
If that's council's wish, I think we were focused on this location only. You're right, there's a secondary location. If the council wanted to extend that or make an amendment to include not just the City Hall location, but also any place that we had three poles. That's essentially what the limiting factor is.
Okay. Well, I mean, for me, although I, again, don't like the particular policy, I think it should apply to all of our flag poles, whatever policy we have.
Should we make an amendment to the... Well, we already voted on it.
We can do another amendment.
We can, I don't know.
You can make a motion now to amend the policy just to top it.
Okay.
I mean, it would be fairly simple.
I don't know. Where's, I'm not sure where the rest of the council fills, sits on this.
I'm with Lenny. I think that would be appropriate. There's more than three flags there. There's more than three flags here. They're both city. It would, to me, warrant change.
It just seems like they're one in the same.
Do I have a majority of the council's approval of that? So can I get, so I would move that the City Hall flag policy that was just adopted extend to all city-owned flag poles that has at least three poles. Is that fair enough?
Is there only two? I believe it is, but by making open it, if we ever had...
If we ever had an occasion that had a...
That would take care of it. That would be appropriate.
Those are the only two currently.
Those are only two currently. That's at least three poles. Can I get a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Councilman?
So a discussion on this, in my opinion, if you're going to have a bad flag policy, then I'd rather only have it in one flag pole, just to say. I won't be voting for this either.
Is there any other discussion? I don't know if the rack has three poles.
That's a good question. Again, if you have it open in, if you have any location with three flag poles.
Yeah. So it's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Opposed.
The motion carries.
How's the government now?
Now we're on to standing general committees.
That's local government in action, though. We argue about it. We vote on it. We move on to the next thing.
And it's historical.
So next up is the standing general committees, the Community Relations Committee, Councilmember Stedman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Relations and Public Affairs Committee met on August 6th at 11:00 a.m. Myself and Councilmember Young were present, and it was, I believe, it was a long agenda. The first item on the agenda was use of the Washington Center. And under the current contract with Washington Center, Lacey City Council is entitled to use the facility for two years...
Two days.
Two days per year at no cost. Four applications received. One was disqualified because it had one of the three, one of the free days last year. Let's see here. I'm struggling because I don't have my reading glasses. I switched cars at the last second.
I don't think you can make that much bigger of a point than that.
Yeah, exactly. The committee discussed the Rotary Club, North Hurston Quanis Club, and the GFWC's Capital Women's Club. The committee voted to give the two free days to Quanis and the Women's Club since they had never been used, since they never used the Washington Center in previous years. Next on the agenda was...
Does that, do we need a motion? We need a motion on that.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yes.
So your recommendation is coming from the Community Relations Committee to the full council, so it'd be up to the full council to affirm your decision.
So can I get a motion to approve the two applications for the Washington Center?
I would move to approve the Quanis and Women's Club for the use of the two free days at the Washington Center.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
See, now you're getting me reading and I just read. All right, the next on the agenda was Discovery Lacey update. The Lacey South Sound Chamber created a steering committee to focus on the Lacey the entire year instead of the Lacey Days, where it was about a two-week period where it started with music, well, the Jazz Festival, right? And then ended with the fireworks show, I believe. But this was to include the whole entire year because having a great city like Lacey, it's worth celebrating 365 days of the week, right? So, the steering committee was creating Discover Lacey website to promote local business and attractions in Lacey. Members pay a flat fee of $300 to be included on the website. The focus of the steering committee will be getting the public to visit the website and encourage businesses to join the Chamber of Commerce. Website management will be supported by LTAC funds. The next on the agenda was an update of the 3rd of July festival. Jen reported that the, let's see here, reported that Western Display did a great job of the fireworks show. Parks and Recs will use them again next year and there were a few changes the department wanted to make for the upcoming year. Increase the number of food vendors, increase the number of Santa cans, rent more inflatables for the kids, improve the sound system, because especially during the Pledge of Allegiance, the crowd had a hard time hearing past like 100 feet. So, people were standing in attention for the National Anthem and half the crowd didn't even know what was going on until they just noticed people were standing in attention. So, let's see here. Move the stage out of, from the shelter and into the open area, which would also help that sound system too. Moving the emergency area out in front of the shop area, place food truck vendors on the west side of the park, because there's a lot of people on the other end of the park that, that there wasn't enough Santa cans and vendors, there was no vendors as a matter of fact on that side. But, moving on. Councilmember Young had a family visit from Texas who attended the 3rd of July, they were able to get to their parking spot with their RV and they were really impressed with the entire event. They even visited Seattle and weren't as impressed with that as much as they were with Lacey, so that was a feather in our cap. Next on the agenda was compassionate community update. Scott Spence reported the South Sound Lacey, the South Sound Chamber of Commerce, North Hurston Public Schools in the City of Lacey would like to set a goal to complete and track 100,000 acts of compassion for one school year, starting the 5th of September. And schools in North Hurston, schools can print advertisements for this school on banners, group can encourage organizations to record acts of compassion throughout the year. The website entry is simple and the compassionate community group is working out the logistics. And that, I believe, is my report.
So, I have a question about the Discover Lacey update. When is the website going to launch and how do people find out on how to participate in it? Do you have that idea? Been working on it? No? Anyone?
No, I would just add the fact that it did come out of the issue about Lacey Days, they want to evolve it to Discover. I think they're still working on these items, so I'm not quite sure if it is launched yet, but that will be the main initiative to make sure that it's a year-long focus. That's really the impetus behind that move.
So, did LTAC receive an application for this for next year, Discover Lacey for next year? Do you know?
So, we're going through applications, we have not received those yet, but that's, there's a thought that they will be applying for that for the 2019 year.
Okay.
And I could comment on the board meeting from the Lacey South Sound Chamber that we just had on Wednesday, and the committee member that reports on this was not in attendance. So, I'll get an update and.
Great.
Let everybody know.
Thanks. Next up is the Utilities Committee, Councilmember Young.
The Utilities Committee met on August 6th and Councilmembers Stedman and Councilmember Hearn were there as well as myself. Our first topic of discussion was the sewer collection line operation and maintenance. The sewer line cleaning program serves over 18,000 sewer accounts and they clean the entire sewer distribution system every five years. They use a high-pressure hose that removes debris, root infiltration and grease blockage. Sometimes residents have plumbing damages from the line cleaning due to the high-pressure hose, so the line crews gather information on these homes with the damages for the next cleaning cycle in order to make proper adjustments. And then also, as a community outreach initiative, the line cleaning crews carry new matchbox and Hot Wheels cars, as well as hard hats, to hand out to children while working in Lacey neighborhoods. These crews also participate in the Lacey Fun Fair, STEM, and touch a truck to educate the community about Lacey's sewer line cleaning program. The next topic that was discussed was the pH treatment improvements. Under the current lead and copper rule, the City of Lacey is considered a large water system and we must complete a corrosion control study as required by the Washington Department of Health. The Public Works Department contracted a consultant to develop a corrosion control plan, evaluate the current water quality and see if any adjustments are required. The consultant stated, there does not appear to be an immediate need for treatment since the city meets the copper action level and is very close to being optimized for lead. There were some pH treatment recommendations such as increased caustic to raise the pH at well four, an increased supply at well four, install pH treatment at Madrona Wells one, two, and three, which will also benefit 40337 pressure zones, and install pH treatment in conjunction with replacing well one in the west side by Comatchen area. Lastly, we discussed the elevated 337 zone reservoir. The 337 pressure zone has low pressure due to high elevation. The maximum elevation of 240 feet at street level has about 41 PSI of pressure during periods of low demand and they drop six PSI during periods of high demand. Zone 337 relies on storage located in the 400 pressure zone. In the last Water System Comprehensive Plan update, more storage in this pressure zone was recommended. Therefore, the city purchased property at 4502 Intelco Loop Southeast with the intent of installing a new reservoir. That is my report.
Thank you. Next up is Transportation Committee, Councilmember Hearn.
So I wish that our citizen, we're here, our concerned citizen from the other neighborhood were here to hear this report, but hopefully she can watch it. But, a good meeting on transportation, August 7th at 4 o'clock, where a citizen group from Beckenridge HOA arrived and were just massively impressed with their preparedness. They came representing different factors of their community there, including handicapped and elderly. And their concern, of course, was a part of the road that receives a lot of fast traffic at the front of their HOA between the housing development and the grocery store that's traversed a lot by pedestrians, as well as wheeled pedestrians. And they came prepared with a petition from residents, so they had consensus within their community about this concern. They came with a display board and it was pretty well, it was clearly written, we supply the easel. And they were well spoken and we had a lively and good discussion with Traffic Department, who are looking into it over the next few months. And then, one of the staff suggested that an immediate, or near immediate way of traffic calming in an arterial, which there's limited traffic calming options available, would be to freshen up the parking lines, which would make the road seem a little bit narrow, more narrow, which has a tendency to reduce traffic speeds as well. So, that's just the way to do it. And when citizens come prepared, well-prepared and present, are able to present at a work session, we can get a lot done and I'm sure, I know the staff will be responding accordingly. In fact, we scheduled another work session to follow up with that and after the meeting, I could see the staff brainstorming all the solutions that could be applied to that area. So, it was a good meeting. That's my report.
Sure.
So, in the report, it says that Councilmember Cox was excused, but then it also said the motion was carried and seconded inside me and Councilmember Cox. So, there needs to be edit there somewhere.
Great.
So.
Got that. Great, thank you, thank you for the catch. So next up is Boards, Commissions, Committee Reports, I'm up first. I do have a report to give out from the Mayor's Forum, I think I might have talked about this at a couple meetings ago, that all the Thurston County mayors were invited to have lunch with General Valeski up at Joint Base Lewis McCord. And we did that actually last Thursday. Unfortunately, the South County mayors couldn't make it, J. D. Foster, Mayor of Yum, was going to make it that day and had an emergency, but it was really one of the first times we could sort of sit down one-on-one and really talk about issues going on in our cities and how it affects the military that's living in our cities and some of the issues that we're dealing with right now. It was brought up that, you know, the cost of rent, especially in Lacey, is somewhat set by how much the military receive for their rental allowance or their housing allowance, right? And so if you've noticed that over the years, it goes up every single year, their allowance goes up and rents have been going up to basically match pretty close to what they're receiving. And so, when we talk about affordable housing in Lacey and one of the largest renters within Lacey is the military, that has a direct impact in our city. And of course, when they all thought about that, they said, well, of course it does, but that's not something they'd ever thought about before. Now, what you do about that, you know, it's the market that's setting the costs. And so.
That's why there's no vacancy in Lacey.
That's why there's no vacancy in Lacey and why we're always struggling when it comes to affordable rent within Lacey as well. And so, that was an interesting conversation, they said, oh geez, we just have never thought about that. So, it was a good to have that conversation and we had some conversations about trying to understand the homelessness issue within our communities and the response to it, why Olympia's response is somewhat different than our response, and he was trying to understand that. And so, it was a good conversation overall and I think we agreed that we have a, the only other time we saw or meet as a community is through the South Sound Military Communities Partnership and we have an elected officials breakfast, but we really don't get a chance to have any breakout sessions and one-on-one conversations during that time. And he was very impressed with the conversations that we had, that we want to do it again at some point. And so, it was a really good, it was a really good lunch. The only other thing I want to report out on, I probably should have done it under my Mayor's Report, is that this last Monday, we had another faith leaders Subcommittee on Homelessness here at City Hall. This is our third meeting. We thought it was going to be our last meeting before we report out to the full group, this is the Subcommittee of the Faith Leaders on the Homelessness. And, but, it sounds like we're going to have one more meeting after that. We're really just trying to get to a place where we can have some consensus of where the faith leaders and the people who have been taking part in these meetings, what sort of policy issues we can sort of rally behind, or what, maybe a project that we can rally behind going forward. It's been very productive and I've been very impressed with everyone who's shown up who wants to be a part of the solution, that, you know, these are people who are out in our community and have a lot of compassion and they're all leaders, we're all public servants to a degree. And so, it's been really inspirational to be a part of this and I just want to thank Councilmember Cox for being there and being a part of it as well. I think we're going to get to, hopefully in September, get to some sort of policy that we can forward on to the full faith leaders council, so to speak. And once that happens, there will obviously need to be report that out to where they're at, to this full council on some ideas going forward. Something that's already been brought up and we've sort of already are working that way and it's, is that currently, the ordinances that are on the books right now in the City of Lacey doesn't allow for any sort of homeless, like these Calistoga shelters or these temporary shelters to be on different private properties of the different faiths. This is something that we have been, we've seen in other communities. And so, it's something that I think the Planning Commission is sort of looking at right now and it was asked if we could sort of get an update on that, what's the timeline when the Planning Commission maybe come forward to this council on some of those ideas? And I think, I think it's going to be coming here, I don't know when it's going to come for us, but, Rick?
Yes, the Planning Commission has been working on these issues. The, and you're correct, the ordinance we have on the books right now was, is an older ordinance that was addressing the Camp Coyote model at the time, the 90-day limitation. And, and so, looking at these new type of concepts, especially if it's hosted by a church on their church properties, we need to go back and amend that ordinance to address it. The Planning Commission has met with representatives of the Conistoga concept, the community shelters. Sevier Mukeshi's gave a presentation and they've been working on that as well as proposals by Saint Marks. And so they will be looking at those, that ordinance this fall, as well as part of the rest of the housing strategy concepts. But that was one of the lower hanging fruits that they can address right away because we already have a framework in place that could just be modified.
Great, thank you. Councilman?
Curiosity, what happened to the Camp Coyote concept? That was five years ago and I just don't know what happened to that.
The Camp Coyote concept, because when it originally started, they were rotating from various.
Church settings.
Churches that hosted them. And then they found a permanent location in the Mottment Industrial Area on county property and they got kind of the tiny house type of concept cottages. Ever since then, there hasn't been another group of homeless or folks that wanted that type of shelter to band together to create that model, so it just hasn't been in existence other than the first Camp Coyote. So, the ordinance is still on the books and it could still happen again, but then it'd be a temporary nature and you'd have to move every 90 days and rotate. And so, that's probably the bigger challenge. And the other challenge with that model is it took a lot of effort from the various hosting organizations to have volunteers to help manage it and support it. And so, that's the other issue that made it, I think, a challenge to have more of those to occur.
So I imagine those are the issues that are being focused on.
Yes, it'd be more of a, if, say, use the church as an example, they have a large property and they wanted to host five or six more substantial permanent structures and they have the organization to support that operation, then that is something we would look at on a permanent basis versus a temporary basis.
Great, thank you. And that's my report, on to the Deputy Mayor.
So, the Joint Animal Services Commission doesn't meet in August, so it'll be September. But, if you haven't kept up with the news, there are now 11 potential serial cat killings, the last two along the Silicon Road area, so just outside of Lacey and the county.
Progress at all?
Not that I know of, but they are trying to follow as many leads as possible. Obviously, our animal services officer and the Police Department, it's all kind of working together now. And not every single one is confirmed as being the same MO, by the way. And then a lot I reported out August 9th, but since then, we did, three of the board members of the four sent a letter out to Olympia Council. members of the four sent a letter out to Olympia Council outlining our concerns about homelessness and the safety of the Lot facility downtown. And I don't know what the status of that is. And then, again, Olympic Region Clean Air Agency, I reported out August 9th. However, I do want to mention that ORCA, as well as Ecology and other monitoring sites have reported that the, if you don't know, that the air quality this week until late Wednesday was recorded at our Lacey monitoring site with readings in the two-hundredths of two-point-five particulate, microns of particulate matter. And some of that actually got up, clear up to, in two-hundred-and-fifty-something, I can't remember. Three-hundred-and-one is hazardous, so that, so this was in the range of very unhealthy. The reading for today, though, was eighteen microns of two-point-five PM with the, within the good range, and mainly because the wind is now blowing the smoke out of the area. However, there is some prediction that we may still have a few days from now, some more smoke come down, but probably not as bad. And that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Young?
All right, so Thurston Thrives Coordinating Council met this past Monday at the Hub in Lacey, and we received an overview of the Thurston Thrives Action Teams and what collective impact means. And since the launch of Thurston Thrives in 2013, Thurston County has gone from being the fourteenth-ranked healthiest county in Washington State to being the sixth-ranked healthiest county. And also, Thurston County was in U.S. News and World Report as being in the top eight percent of all healthy counties nationwide. So, progress is being made. And then, the Housing, the Housing Action Team talked about their new housing affordability model that they've created, and they will be sharing this with the private sector, as well as local municipalities, to help increase the supply of affordable housing. And then, we were honored to have Congressman Denny Heck present about the need for more affordable housing nationwide, and how we are seven-point-five million homes short in America. Congressman Heck is working with a committee to help improve housing policy so that more housing can be made available. And then, we went around the table and shared some reports. The Thurston County Prosecutor John Toonheim reported some good news about the jail. The daily population of the jail has gone down, as well as the lengths of stay have, they've decreased. And then, on August 29th, next Wednesday, there will be a Regional Housing Summit at the SPPSC campus in Lacey from 5:30 to 8:00 PM, and I will be attending, I will be attending that housing summit and reporting back on it here. Okay, and then, so that's my report on Thurston Thrives. Then, the Health and Human Services Committee met at the CIP meeting on Monday, August 13th. We reviewed the twelve-month reports for 2017 and 2018's CIP grantees. We also discussed the future of the CIP and the inter-local agreement as it relates to the Thurston County Department of Health and the United Way. At this point, it seems like there will be some changes to that inter-local agreement, but these are still up in the air and have not yet been determined. We are meeting again on September 10th, so updates will follow. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Greenstein?
Thank you. EMS, Emergency Medical Services, met on August 15th. Relatively short agenda, but rather long meeting, actually. The primary reason for the long meeting is it was the presentation of the 2019-2020 budget. The budget passed, this is a preliminary budget, and in the case of EMS, the budget is only a recommendation to the County Commission, so that budget will move forward to the County Commission for approval. The, the budget actually looks pretty good. Things have gone fairly well for EMS. They've, they've done a pretty good job with the money, and the next two years actually looked pretty good. In the future, after that, it gets a little dicier, and there could be, you know, some needs for trying to figure out how to, how to afford the continued operation of serving the, the community. We've actually have a special committee that's been working on that, on long-term plan, which I sit on, and I'll have further reports on that later as we get further in. We're still working on actually the goals for that committee, so that, that'll be a long-term project that I'll get back to you on. The two other things that we did discuss is, we have the retirement from the Board of the doctor who's been on there since the beginning. Dr. Feller has been on there, he's one of the founders of EMS in this county, he's been there a really long time. He's retiring, and because of that, they've, they've wanted to put in the ability to, give someone an emeritus position. The idea behind it was for Dr. Feller, but it could be used for anyone. So, it was approved by the Board to allow for a non-voting emeritus position on the Board. That, too, will go to the County Commission for approval. And then, the last thing that was discussed is the difficulty the county has in, in getting and retaining paramedics. It's, there's a shortage, it's not just here locally, it's actually a national issue, the shortage of paramedics. And I think part of that in discussion is, our community, as well as others, need to start really looking at what this next generation of people want in a job. You know, what's important to them, what do they need, what do you need to, what are they, what are they looking for to stay long-term? A lot of money is invested in, in training a paramedic and getting them on board, so it's, it's critical that we find a way to keep them long-term. Training them, for them to then go off somewhere else is, is just very costly. So, that, that'll be another thing that'll be talked about over the next several months, I'm sure, but we, we need to come up with some answers for that. And that is my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Hearn?
So, we took a short vacay early this week, so I don't have any reports except Councilmember Cox graciously accepted subbing for me for VCB, and I'm sure she'll report on that during her turn.
Do you want to report?
Or right now?
Or want?
I can do that now, if you want.
Sure.
Okay. So, I wasn't able to make the whole meeting, but I think I got there for the important parts. They tentatively approved a proposed budget for 2019 that's six-point-nine percent above the current budget. It's, would be one-point-three-eight million dollars. So, there will have to be final approval later on that, but... And then, the other, we ended up wrapping up the meeting in a very celebratory mode because the destination marketing team got national accreditation, which is very rare for visitor and convention bureaus of the size that we have here in Thurston County. So, they actually uncorked champagne bottles, and, and we drank a toast to the marketing team, and it was, it was a really nice session, so.
I knew I shouldn't have missed it.
But here, you can have a budget. You read it and weep.
It's yours now. Great. On, Councilmember Sedman?
Well, that's great news, because I know when we sat on the VCB mayor, that we, I think our budget was like sixty thousand.
Yeah, it was, yeah. It was very low. It was, was not nearly close. Yeah, that was where the, yeah, exactly.
The TPA was the big game changer.
Yeah, yeah. It seems, it seems the VCB has grown as fast as Lacey. So, I've previously already reported on both my committees, Lacey South Sound Chamber and the Solid Waste Advisory Committee, but I did want to say something, because you brought up the, the meeting with the ma, with the general, and on Thursday night, while I was down in San Diego, in, in a different military capacity, I guess, because my nephew was graduating from Marine Corps boot camp. And not many people know, but my father was in the Army, and he had three sons that joined the Marine Corps, so you can imagine his, the pain he, he went through. But it was actually very awesome to welcome my nephew into, you know, he's my nephew, but I gotta welcome him as a brother into the United States Marine Corps Brotherhood. So, we're very proud of him, and it's, it's great to have him on watch, and keeping us safe, and, and the values that we all share, and the freedoms that we all have in common. So, I just want to give him a little shout-out, I think.
That's very nice.
Very appropriate, so.
Congratulations. Now, back to Councilmember Cox.
All righty. Community Action Council did not meet this month, but Inter-City Transit Authority made up for it by having a retreat on top of the meetings. At the, the most recent meeting, let's see, we conducted a public hearing on the draft 2017 Annual Report and the 2018-2023 Transit Development Plan. Another key part of that meeting was having an update on federal advocacy activity from Dale Lern from the Gordon Thomas Hollywell Form, Hollywell Farm, Firm in Washington, DC. Their work is to interface with, and, and kind of lobby on behalf of Inter-City Transit with the Federal Transportation Administration, as well as Congress, to try to advocate for Inter-City Transit in the many grants that are applied for. And, and part of the reason this work is so critical is because the federal government, starting in 2012, completely shifted the model for funding for infrastructure and transportation, where the federal government had paid eighty percent of the cost of a new bus, or the cost of building transit center or transit maintenance facilities. It's flipped, and now they only pay twenty percent, leaving the local communities trying to scrape up the money to do that. So, that's, that's a really important piece of all this. At the retreat, we discussed the ballot issue that will be on the November ballot, proposing a four-tenths of a percent sales tax increase. We just, we discussed the consequences if the ballot issue does not pass, and I think what that's gonna look like is almost immediately, I mean, sometime within the next year, a fifteen percent cut in service. And the reason for having to do it so soon is because the sooner you cut, the less you have to cut. And the reality is that Inter-City Transit will be in the red by 2022 if this doesn't pass and all things stay as they are. Talked about a long, long-term, long-range plan for the express service along the Martin Way Corridor. That is the bane of Inter-City Transit's existence in terms of trying to keep buses on time with service there. So, a, a proposal that would enhance the ability to offer that express service would cost twenty-five dollars, twenty-five million dollars a mile, so it's, it's a big, big stretch to do that. Also, talked some about innovative service zones where, neighborhoods where the larger buses really can't get in and maneuver, having smaller vehicles sort of on a on-demand basis, and that could be public or private vehicles that would connect with buses on routes. And lots, lots of other things, but there's that. And then, let's see, what else do I owe you tonight? Oh, Thurston Regional Planning Council's vacation in August as well, so that, and that is my report. The Ad-Hoc Committee on Homelessness and Affordable Housing will meet on the second Thursday in September.
Councilmember?
Thank you. I, Councilmember Cox, I thought the IT presentation last week was fantastic. Very well done, very complete, very clear, answered most questions before asked, and had good answers for the questions asked, so if you could pass that on.
I'm sure the General Manager would be thrilled to hear that, and I will.
Great. Well, we've reached the end of our agenda. I'm just to give a heads-up to this council, I will actually be out of the country all next week, I've been going down to Mexico, so I'll leave you in the good hands of the Deputy Mayor if something comes up.
You didn't hear that trip got canceled?
Cute. And so, I actually, leaving, my flight leaves at 5:30, so I'm leaving the airport like at 3:30 or something like that, so I gotta go home and try to get some sleep.
Just go now.
Exactly. But, so, until next time, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'm gonna call this meeting adjourned.